Before we proceed with the meeting, I would like to take a point of order. To note that Mr. Montgomery is not here tonight. He and his family on a much deserved vacation. Board members, you have seen the agenda for this evening's monthly meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, would you signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the agenda is approved. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, good evening. And we'll begin our meeting with a moment of silence, which can be used for prayer meditation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you'd please stand and join me in a moment of silence, please. That concludes our moment of silence. We'll now have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic and one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, for the next item, we are pleased to be recognizing a number of new administrative appointments this evening, and so we will proceed with those introductions.
Mr. Vice Chairman, Dr. Cashwell, members of the board, colleagues and guests. It is my pleasure to introduce secondary's appointments tonight. Kathryn Mormon, the new Associate Principal at Tuckahoe Middle School. Ms. Mormon has served as the Assistant Principal at Tuckahoe for the past three years. She holds a Bachelor's in Science and a minor in English, a Master's in Teaching and a Postmaster's Certificate in Educational Leadership from VCU. Ms. Mormon previously served as the Assistant Principal of Tuckahoe. She taught at Brooklyn and Holman Middle Schools for six years as a science teacher. During this time, she served as Department Chair, New Teacher Coordinator and Administrative Aid. In addition, she was the Assistant Principal at Elkhole Middle School. She is so excited to continue her leadership journey at Tuckahoe Middle School. Let's congratulate Kathryn Mormon.
Thank you, Dr. Grant and the school board. I have tonight, my family is just getting home for vacation, so they couldn't make it tonight, but I have my, some of my work, family and previous work, family. Sherry Gimble, my principal, Ann Green, my former Associate Principal, Susan Profit, and my friend Tara Palace is here. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Susan Profit is the new Principal of Holman Middle School. Susan holds a Bachelor of Arts in Mathematics and a Concentration in Education from the University of Richmond, a Master's of Education and Administration and Supervision and a PhD in Educational Leadership from VCU. For the past year, Dr. Profit has served as the Associate Principal at Tuckahoe Middle School. She was also an Assistant Principal at Quayacuson Middle School for three years. Dr. Profit taught high school mathematics for 15 years. Susan's experiences across diverse schools will be invaluable as redistricting process continues and increased diversity at Holman Middle School. Please join me in congratulating Dr. Profit.
Thank you, Dr. Grant, and thank you to the school board. I'd also like to thank some people who are here, some of the same team. Ann Green from Tuckahoe, Sherry Gimble from Quayacuson, and Dr. Grant especially for the support. And my family, who is here, my husband Heath, my son Gray, and my daughter Peyton. I am incredibly excited for this opportunity, and I'm ready to work hard and can't wait for the school year to start. Thank you.
Hermitage High School, new Principal and the Henrico County Instructional Leader of the Year, Dr. Michael Jackson. Dr. Jackson received his Bachelor's of Art from Wingate University, his certification in Art Education, his Master's of Education in Educational Leadership, and a doctorate from VCU. Dr. Jackson has served as the Principal of Roth Middle School for the past six years. I'm gonna miss you, Michael. And he spent four years as an administrator at Brooklyn Middle School in preparation for leading Roth. The majority of his teaching experience was at Fairfield Middle School. Dr. Jackson is a Hermitage graduate and still lives in the community, so he truly knows and understands Hermitage High School role pride. Congratulations, Michael.
Thank you, Dr. Grant, and I will miss you as well. Your role pride is true. Panther born and Panther bred. I'm happy, excited to be the new Principal at Hermitage High School, and of course I have my lovely wife, I can't go anywhere without, Ms. Kenyon Jackson. I think you all might know her well. But I thank you for this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to the next journey.
Joining Dr. Jackson will be Tyler Lee, the new Associate Principal at Hermitage High School. Mr. Lee has served as the Assistant Principal at Hermitage for the past three years. Mr. Lee received his Bachelor's in Mathematics and a Master's in Art of Teaching and his certificate for Educational Leadership from James Madison University. Prior to coming to Hermitage, he taught mathematics for eight years at the high school level in Hanover County. Mr. Lee comes from a family of educators, and he is excited to continue to learn and grow at Hermitage High School. Congratulations, Mr. Lee.
Good evening, I'd like to thank the board, thank Dr. Farrell, Dr. Jackson for this opportunity, Dr. Tiggen. I'm really looking forward to it. We start school in 13 days, and we're really excited. So I'm joined here by my wife, Emily. I wouldn't be here without her, for sure, so I appreciate her support and role pride. Thank you.
The new Assistant Principal at Freeman High School is Gilma Bev Steele. Ms. Steele taught Social Studies at Highland Springs High School for nine years before transferring to Freeman. Ms. Steele received a Bachelor of Arts in History and Social Science and her Master of Teaching, also in History and Social Science Education from Virginia Commonwealth University. Ms. Steele received her Postmaster's Certificate in Educational Leadership and Policy Studies from the University of Richmond. She has taught at Freeman for the past four years and served as Administrative Aid for the past two years. Last summer, she coordinated the Summer Academy, further honing her leadership skills. Ms. Steele is happy to continue her journey at Freeman High School. We look forward to her leadership. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Steele.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to say first and foremost, thank you to Dr. Tiggen, sorry, Dr. Cashwell for this opportunity and the school board. I'd also like to say thank you to the leadership of Henrico County. I've been, I've spent my entire teaching career in the county, and I wouldn't go anywhere else. Tonight, I have here my husband of 20 years, Robert Steele. He's been supportive of me throughout this entire process. My son, who just raised from his university class at VCU to be here. His twin sister, she's at work, so she couldn't make it tonight. And then my principal, Mr. John Marshall. I've really enjoyed my last four years at Douglas Freeman High School. As mentioned, prior to that, I was at Highland Springs for nine years, and I always thought Highland Springs would be the only place that was in my heart, but Freeman has really grown on me, and it's now number one in my heart. And I see myself as a true rebel. I see myself as an advocate for students. I love teaching, I love education, it's what I've wanted to do since I was seven years old, and I really am looking forward to this expanded role, leadership role, because I think it's gonna give me an even greater opportunity to continue to advocate for students and families. So thank you all very much.
The newest Assistant Principal at Glen Allen High School is Leah Winhoff. Leah, I'm gonna miss you also. For the last five years, she was, she served as the IB Coordinator at Fairfield Middle School where she taught English. She received her Bachelor's of Science in Education with a minor in English from Bowling Green State University, and a Master's of Education with a Concentration in Administration and Leadership from VCU. She has taught collaborative, on grade level, and honors IB at the middle and high school levels, with her high school experience beginning in Houston, Texas. She also was a 2017-18 Aspiring Leaders Academy participant. Please join me in congratulating Leah as the next Assistant Principal of Glen Allen High School.
My personal cheerleader here, too. So I wanna thank the school board and all of the leadership for their support. And tonight with me, I have somebody who doesn't wanna cooperate right now, so. My husband Nate, who's a fellow educator. I have my daughter Adriana, a rising kindergartner in Henrico County, so we're excited. Lots of transition for all of us. And Felicity, who is the youngest here. I just wanna thank everybody who has seen leadership in me and put me into the right spots at the right time, and I'm excited to continue this growth and to be an advocate and a servant to the students, staff, and families of Glen Allen High School. Thank you.
And our last one from secondary. The new Associate Principal position at Godwin High School is Jessica Burbick. Ms. Burbick has been an Assistant Principal at Glen Allen High School for the past three years, supervising mathematics and special education. Ms. Burbick received her Bachelor's of Science in Liberal Studies and her Collegiate Professional License from Longwood University. Ms. Burbick received her Master of Educational Leadership and Policy Studies from VCU. In 2001, Ms. Burbick will be Dr. Burbick after she completes her doctorate in Educational Leadership and Policy Studies from Virginia Tech. Prior to transitioning to high school, Ms. Burbick was the Coordinator of Assessment and Remediation at Quayacuson Middle School. Her effective use of data to identify students most in need of interventions and alternative pathways to success pays off for her students. Please join me in congratulating Jessica, another middle school.
Thank you, Dr. Grant. Thank you, Dr. Cashwell, and school board members. I wanna thank my previous Principals, Sherry Gimble and Reggie Davenport. They were incredibly supportive. I'm incredibly grateful for my time at Quayacuson and as a Jaguar at Glen Allen High School. I also wanna thank Lee Donovan for this opportunity, and Dr. Farrell and the leadership team. I'm so excited to be an Eagle, and I can't wait to see what's next for us. I brought my closest friends and my amazing mom tonight. Their support is what keeps me going, so thank you so much.
And Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues and guests, we continue with the elementary appointments from across the summer. We have a number of persons who are moving into key leadership roles as well. First, it's my pleasure to introduce the new Principal of Donahoe Elementary School, Ms. Stephanie Williams. Ms. Williams earned her Bachelor of Arts in Teaching in Psychology from Mary Baldwin College, Master's Degree and Postmasters Endorsement in School Administration and Supervision from VCU. She began her teaching career as a reading teacher and specialist at Adams Elementary School. She has served as a resource teacher and then associate at Harvey, and until her recent appointment, she served with distinction at Montrose Elementary School as the Associate Principal. As you can see, she brings a wealth of experience serving students, educators, and communities. We are thrilled that she is leading Donahoe Elementary as their newest Principal. Congratulations, Stephanie.
You said that so eloquently, thank you. I'd like to thank the school board and all of the leaders who have paved and carved my way and whose shoulders I stand on today, from secretary to right now. So I just wanna say thank you to all of you who've molded and shaped me. Today, I do bring with me my husband, my awesome mom, and the awesome Donahoe team that has come out to support me this evening, so I thank you so much again.
We are equally thrilled to introduce the new Principal of Lakeside Elementary School, Ms. Holly Drake. Ms. Drake earned both her Bachelor's and Master's in English Education from VCU. She attained her degree in School Administration and Supervision from the University of Virginia. She began her teaching career as an AmeriCorps, America Reads Team Leader and Reading Interventionist at Green Elementary School in Richmond, and then taught English at Lee Davis High School before moving on to Liberty Middle School as an Assistant Principal. We then shamelessly stole her across the river to Glen Lee Elementary, where she has served with distinction, leading the school there as the Associate Principal for the past two years. We join the Lakeside community in being excited about her appointment as the next Principal. Congratulations, Holly.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hall. Thank you for all of your support, and to the elementary team for your support as well. Thank you to Dr. Cashwell and the board, and a big thank you to my family. I'm not allowed to name my children because it would embarrass them, but my husband Mike is here tonight. He is also an educator, chemistry teacher from the other H County, I won't name them. And my mom is here as well, she joins us from Spotsylvania. She's down to watch our kids next week as we head back to school, so thank you all.
And continuing with principal announcements, we are delighted to introduce the new Principal of Twin Hickory Elementary School, Ms. Brooke Davis. Brooke received her Master's Degree in Teaching at VCU and her Ed Specialist Degree and Endorsement in Leadership and Supervision from Regent University. She began her career in Henrico as a classroom teacher at Penchbeck and Rivers Edge Elementary Schools. She was a resource teacher at both Twin Hickory and Mayberry, and has served with distinction as the Associate Principal at Dumbarton Elementary School. I know the Trailblazer family is thrilled to welcome her back, and we congratulate her on her appointment as the new Principal there at Twin Hickory. Congratulations, Brooke.
Thank you, Dr. Hall and Dr. Cashwell, members of the board. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm so excited to continue my growth as a leader here, so proud of my experiences that I've had with Henrico County and all the grateful opportunities. I'm also very grateful for my mentor, who happens to be across the room here, Mr. De Salt. He's really helped grow and shape me into the leader that I am, and of course, I would not be here today without my loving family, my husband, who is also an administrator, who understands the role. He's been a huge help, and my daughter here, Ella Kate, and then my mother-in-law and my aunt and uncle are here also to support me. So we're all very excited and excited to get the ground, hit the ground running for a new school year.
And now to introduce our Associate Principals, we'd like to introduce the new Associate Principal at Montrose Elementary School, Kristy Budney. Kristy received her BS from Longwood University, her Master's from VCU, and is currently a doctoral candidate at VCU. Kristy has served as a classroom teacher in Prince George County, at Baker Elementary, and most recently has served as the Resource Teacher at Montrose. We look forward to her continued outstanding work at Montrose as the new Associate Principal. Congratulations, Kristy.
Thank you, Dr. Hall and members of the school board. I am very excited to continue my leadership journey at Montrose. I've been there for, this will be my seventh year, so very excited to continue with the great things that we've been doing there and building the relationships with our students and the community. I have my wonderful principal, who this will be our 12th year working together, here to support me, and then my husband and my mom here, so thank you all.
And we are delighted to introduce the new Associate Principal at Greenwood Elementary School, Ms. Leisha Jackson. Ms. Jackson started her teaching career as a third-grade teacher at Skipworth Elementary. She's earned Master's Degrees in Administration and Supervision from VCU, as well as her administrative endorsement at VCU. She has been recognized as a Heart of Henrico winner and Teacher of the Year, as well as a Sally Mae First Year Teacher of the Year. She has served as the Resource Teacher of Greenwood Elementary for the past 15 years, and we could not be more proud that she will now serve at Greenwood as their new Associate Principal. Congratulations, Leisha.
Good evening, thank you. I'd like to acknowledge the presence and support of my family first. My husband, Robert Jackson, my two young adults, Zatira and Zelgen Jackson. I certainly wanna thank the school board and Dr. Cashwell. I am very excited about continuing the work alongside my principal, Mr. Ryan Stein, and just serving the Greenwood families in my new capacity, so thank you.
Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the school board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues, and special guests, it is my pleasure to introduce the newest member of the Teaching, Learning, and Innovation Team, Ms. Kendall Hunt, who will be serving in the role of English Language Arts Specialist for Middle School. Ms. Hunt most recently served as a Division Level Elementary Literacy Coach with Henrico County Public Schools, a position she has held since 2016. Ms. Hunt has also served HCPS as a Division Level Secondary Literacy Coach, as well as a Staff Development Instructor for Reading K through 12 in the Office of School Improvement. Prior to her work in Henrico, Ms. Hunt served as a Virginia Project Coordinator with the University of Kansas Center for Research on Learning, a Striving Readers' Grant Specialist with the Virginia Department of Education, a Middle School Literacy Coach, and Elementary Reading Specialist with Hanover County Public Schools. Ms. Hunt has also served Hanover County and Hopewell City Public Schools as a Reading Recovery Teacher. Ms. Hunt holds a Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education from Mary Baldwin College, a Master of Arts in Education from the College of William &amp; Mary, and a School Leadership Endorsement from James Madison University. Ms. Hunt also holds a Reading Specialist K-12 Endorsement from the College of William &amp; Mary. Welcome aboard, Ms. Hunt.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you so much to Dr. Cashwell and the board for this opportunity. I am super excited to be here and to really make some magic happen with reading in our middle schools. I am here tonight with my son, who is a Tuckahoe Middle School student, and my mom, my great mom, and she attended Freeman High School, I attended Freeman High School, and Patrick will attend Freeman. And I'm also here with my friend and colleague, Glenn Smith, who has been an amazing mentor these last five years, so thank you. I really look forward to working with the middle schools.
Members of the board, Vice Chair, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues and special guests, unfortunately, I was going to introduce Kimberly Marshall, and she is stuck on 64 in this rain, so with permission, I would like to bring her back next month, so she can introduce, or if she comes in and it's appropriate as such. But she is on her way here from Wake County, she's just stuck in traffic, so.
And I think that concludes our introductions, and we will wish our person stuck in traffic well and hope that she makes it. Alright, that concludes our administrative appointments.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairman. I'm sorry, Madam Superintendent. Mrs. Ogborne, would you be so kind to read our mission statement, please?
Be happy to.
Thank you.
Henrico County Public Schools, an innovative leader in educational excellence, will actively engage our students in diverse educational, social, and civic learning experiences that inspire and empower them to become contributing citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. The next item on our agenda this evening is the public forum. This is the time where citizens are invited to address the school board on any matter of concern about the school division. Some citizens may have signed up in advance with the school board clerk. We will follow that list first, and then allow anyone else who wishes to speak to come to the podium, to do so after we have completed the list. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your name and your neighborhood or school affiliation. Once you finish speaking, we ask that you write your name and contact information on the sign-in form located on the table behind the microphone, and check the box if you wish to be contacted by staff about your concerns. To assist you in tracking your time, there is a timekeeping system on the podium. Speakers will have a four-minute time limit. The light will be green as you begin your remarks. The yellow light means you have one minute remaining, and we ask that you stop speaking when the light turns red. The school board is here tonight to hear from you. The community, speakers should speak directly to the board. We will not be responding to the speakers. We appreciate your attendance here this evening and providing your input. Before we hear from our speakers, we're gonna ask that, Dr. Uz, come on back up if you don't mind.
Thank you so much. So, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues and special guests, I would like to introduce Kimberly Marshall for the Exceptional Education Specialist in the Department of Exceptional Education. Ms. Marshall comes to Henrico County Public Schools from Wake County Public Schools, where she served as the Senior Administrator for Policies and Dispute Resolution in Special Education. Ms. Marshall also served as an Assistant Principal, Library Specialist, and English Teacher in Wake County. Ms. Marshall holds a Master's Degree in School Administration with a Concentration in Urban Education from North Carolina Central University, a Master's Degree in Library Science from North Carolina Central, and a Bachelor's Degree in English from University of North Carolina Greensboro. Welcome, Ms. Marshall.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to serve in this well-respected school district. I am excited about my new beginnings here, and I look forward to working on behalf of the wonderful students of Henrico County Public Schools.
The speaker, the first speaker tonight is Dr. Curtis Brennan. Would you come forward, Dr. Brennan?
Good evening. Thanks for having me, especially the leadership. Let me start by saying that I am a product of Henrico County. I'm what you call one of the Trailblazers, okay? I'm the one that can basically give some of our students an opportunity to believe in things that they're capable of doing, because it happened to me. One of the things that I tried to do was to come back to Henrico and share some of my ideas and thoughts, thoughts with some of the student body, who I believe would get and would be excited about what I can do to give them things to think about. Let me explain that to you right quick. See, when I was in school, that wasn't no Nine Mile Road, okay? That wasn't no Eastgate Mall. When I was in school, someone inspired me to do something. I grew up in a foster home, okay? But someone inspired me to believe in something, and I can remember when I was sitting and I would listen to one of my most favorite person, I miss him all the time, Dr. Bill Boshier. Cause I graduated under Dr. Bill Boshier, and he said to me, he said, "Curtis, you need to give back when you get out there and you do well in life." Well, a couple months ago, I had an opportunity to speak with some folks about coming back and sharing some of my motivational speaking and getting kids excited about things that we can get them to realize in life, and I talked with the principal at Highland Springs and Fairfield Middle School, and I told them, I said, "Look, I don't care if I do no other school, but I wanna do Highland Springs and Fairfield, because those are the grounds that I walked on." And I can share some things with these students, and I can make someone out there a believer. See, because you know what our kids are dealing with today, and if they don't believe in something, they fall for anything. Well, I'm a product of belief, because see, I came from there and I'm here now, okay? But I never did hear back from these principals. I had a real serious problem with that, because if you're gonna tell me you're gonna get back in touch with me, and yet you don't, then what are you doing for those kids? I'm bringing that to you all attention, because I didn't ask them to pay me anything. I'm doing this out of the kindness of my heart, because I'm very emotional about the kids at Highland Springs and Fairfield, because most of those kids at Highland Springs and Fairfield, I went to school with their parents or their grandparents. Who would be better to sit and tell them how certain things in life can happen, other than someone who have walked the hallways, talked the hallways, but been a good advocate and listened? So what I'm encouraging you all to do is, please, get with those leadership out there and tell them that, "Look, I'm here for a minute, and I won't be here for a long time." But if I don't present or introduce myself to anyone, Highland Springs and Fairfield, and I guarantee, after I make that speech to that, the rest of your leadership will want me to speak to your student body too, because I can tell you this, over 30-some years, and I've been in this case for 35 years, and I retired, and I run my own nonprofit now, and I come back and I give back, because it makes a difference. Made a difference in my life, I know I can inspire someone else to believe in something. So, I could've been doing a lot of things tonight, other than coming here talking to you. So take that very serious, because I'm very serious about the fact that I can help some of those kids. Give me that opportunity. Give me that opportunity. Let your leadership know. If you need some literature on me, Kathy, do you have some literature on me, or do you need some more? Need some more? See, those two people know me. We've been communicating.
Thank you so much, Ms. Brandon. If you can give it to them, they'll receive it now. Thank you so much for sharing.
Appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Next, we're going to ask Ms. Jennifer Andrews if she'd be so kind to come to the microphone.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Doc.
Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues and guests, I'm Jennifer Andrews, teacher, exceptional education teacher at Godwin and Henrico resident, speaking on behalf of the Henrico Education Association. Members of the HEA have spent the last several days welcoming staff at various county-wide meetings, and I've seen y'all at these gatherings, too. There are teachers with and without classroom experience, transportation staff, and I've seen a lot of buses on the road practicing their runs, and I did stop when they opened the stop sign, school nutrition staff, and earlier this summer, CNM staff. There are feelings of anxiety, anticipation, and excitement, all awaiting the arrival of students on Tuesday, September 3rd. We look forward to a great year ahead, working together to help all students reach their full potential. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Andrews, and to the Henrico Education Association. We thank you, as always, for all of your work and all of your labor in making our school division the great division that it is. That completes the list of individuals who signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to the board? If so, we inquire that you would please come forward at this time. That completes the public forum. We do thank you so much for your input. Board members, you have had an opportunity to review the minutes from June 20 of 2019 work session and monthly meeting. Is there motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ogborne. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Eyes have it, the minutes are approved. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. For the first item, I'm recommending that the school board accept the Henrico Education Foundation Grant Award totaling $60,940 for Cycle 1 of the 2019-2020 school year.
Is there motion to accept the grant award from the Henrico Education Foundation?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Pike and seconded by Ms. Cock. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the eyes have it, the grant award is accepted.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Ogborne. Yes, ma'am.
If I have just a little moment.
Please.
Wanted to recognize Mike Taylor, who's in the audience, and thank him and the HEP board and staff for all that they do for us. And this is just the beginning of a lot of things that the HEP does for our teachers and students. It's amazing work, and we appreciate it.
You have some inside information on that, don't you?
Pardon?
You have some ins-
I do. I am on the HEP board. I represent this board on the HEP board, so I appreciate that.
We appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you.
Dr. Cashwell?
Thank you. Next is the recommendation that the school board accept the Jobs for Virginia Graduates Grant Award, funding of $25,000 from the Virginia Department of Education.
Board members, you have heard the superintendent's recommendation to accept the Jobs for Virginia Graduates Grant Award funding in the amount of $25,000 from the Virginia Department of Education. Is there motion to accept the grant award funding from the Department of Education?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Cock, seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the eyes have it, the grant funding is accepted.
Thank you. Next, under Operations, I'm seeking your approval to award a construction contract to SB Ballard Construction Company in the amount of $92,702,203.70 for the replacement of Tucker High School.
For our listening audience, this item was discussed earlier today in our work session. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation to award a construction contract to SB Ballard Construction Company in the amount of $92,702,203.70 for the replacement of Tucker High School. Is there motion to award the construction contract as recommended?
I'll take that one, if you don't mind, Mr. Vice Chair. Yes, so moved that we award that contract and excited to do so.
It has been excitingly recommended and moved by Mrs. Ogborne. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been seconded by Ms. Cock. All those in favors, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, going once, going twice. The eyes have it, the contract is awarded.
Thank you. The following items are consent items, and therefore, they can be approved in a block. And so, I'm requesting approval for the following. The acceptance of monthly financial statement and budgetary status reports for the month ending June 30, 2019. Acceptance of monthly financial statements for school nutrition services operations for the month ending June 30, 2019. Approval of the pupil transportation employee appointments and releases. Approval of personnel items. The approval of the reappointment of members of the Henrico Education Foundation. Approval of new appointments for the 2019-2020 Gifted Advisory Council. And approval of new or alternative comprehensive redistricting committee members' recommendations.
In regards to the consent items that have been presented by our superintendent, board members, you have heard the superintendent's recommendation for approval of the consent items. Is there motion to approve the consent items as presented?
So moved.
It has been moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ogborne. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the eyes have it, the consent items are approved.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. That concludes items from the superintendent.
Item 11.01, unfinished business. Board members, is there any unfinished business? Item 11.02, new business. Board members, is there any new business? Item 11.03, announcement of meeting dates. I would like to announce that the school board's next meeting will take place at 2:00 PM on September 12th here in the New Bridge Learning Center. The meeting's start time may be adjusted if necessitated. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.